I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Capriar?
Here.
Councilor Doody?
Councilor Esposito?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Pucci?
Councilor Wentworth?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 15, 2011 special organizational meeting at regular town council meeting?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Capriar?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes, sorry.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda: Correspondence, Citizen Statements, Unfinished Business, New Business. A: Potential Installation of Sanitary Sewers, Gale Drive.
Mr. Mayor, I think half of the town engineer, you have in your packet under 5A, information related to a proposed sewer installation for Gale Drive. If you recall, Gale Drive is scheduled for reconstruction as part of the Road Improvement Program that's been scheduled and will not take place until sometime next calendar year. But as has been the custom of the town and the WPCA, and I think this question has been asked of the Gale Drive properties once or twice before, before we do the road reconstruction, whether the installation of sewers would be something that they would be in favor of, given our schedule and given the cost of that construction and installation. The town engineer, Mr. Weiss, has proposed that the cost of that individual assessment will be somewhere in the vicinity of $14,000 per property that would benefit from it. And the permission we're seeking this evening is simply to send a letter out, as we have in the past, I think the most reason was for subject road with the proposed state project, to see if there's interest in installing the sewers before the road reconstruction takes place. So, that's a request that's being made, and if approved, then we will mail out this information to the individual property owner.
Richard, these numbers do not envision any contribution from the town?
I believe there is the standard 20 percent contribution from the town. And there is also the offset of road repaves, which would reduce their contribution as well.
I don't see a contribution from the town, unless I'm missing it.
That was my conversation with Kurt.
So, is he suggesting that the town would pick up 20 percent of $14,000 and $2,800 a house?
My understanding is the total estimated construction cost would include a value provided by the town equal to 20 percent. That was my understanding.
So, it's not shown, but it's in there?
It's in there. So, the net cost, $84,000, is divided by the number of property owners.
Do we have any possibility of recouping any portion of that from the state, or is that entirely out of grand list?
I believe that's entirely out of possibility. Clean water funds have not been available for installation for some time.
Was this part of the original White Hollow Sewer, so these are allowed to go in?
I think there's a problem on one of the houses.
I believe they're permissible to be connected. I don't know if they were part of that White Hollow project or not. I'd rather think they're not.
Okay, because, I mean, it was very strict that nobody else can get in, so...
In terms of capacity, there is capacity for this connection.
There is capacity?
Are you sure that this is on the White Hollow Sewer?
I don't drive.
No, it drives off Philly.
Okay, so it's the other way.
Why not stop at the perfect center?
It's part of the North Haven system, Fed system, and there is capacity within that concept. And there would be a cost in addition to the assessment, there would be a cost of grinder pumps for the individual property owners. So, it's not the proposed $14,000, it would be that, plus the cost of the grinder pumps and the connection.
Would the property owner be responsible for the grinder?
Yes, and the connection to the service line.
Where are the two houses that are already connected on Gale Drive?
I think they're towards the...
Towards Old Turnpike, correct?
Because it says two of them are already connected.
Old Turnpike is here. Although, okay, they're in the back.
It looks like they're up by Gale Court, based on how I'm reading them.
Gale Court, okay.
I think from the fire hydrant, then, just before Gale Court, and then forward.
So, what would happen is, if there is interest, the WPCA would have the opportunity to hold a public hearing by all the property owners formally.
So, what we're doing now is just sending letters out to the area that's not committing us to anything.
Correct.
We mentioned an inquiry down, about six times three, about $20,000.
Rich, is this just because soil conditions or because of failing systems?
I think probably a combination of both. There are some septic issues up in that neighborhood. I've had an experience to ask. As I said, we've asked this question before with the road reconstruction, and now's the time to really get into things.
That's the question, but we got $20,000 to contribute.
Would you like to proceed, or would you like to have more information provided by the town engineer?
Was this done at the request of the homeowner?
I believe there's one particular homeowner who does have an issue that's looking to get some answers or relief or something, and that's been ongoing for a number of years.
In these numbers, was there fees coming out of the...is the town paying part of this?
I believe, as I said earlier, that the town's contribution to the project is 20 percent. I don't see it broken down into...
Is that 20 percent of the $84,000?
I believe it's 20 percent of the entire project cost, which is typical, and that includes the repaving portion as well, which is part of the road program.
Richard, maybe I'm reading this wrong. I'm seeing $14,000 per household. In prior hookups, didn't we pass or discuss something for $12,800 per household?
Those are connection fees to existing sewer lines.
Gotcha, okay.
This is a sewer main extension.
So, okay.
And the properties are...the difference is, these are assessments that are due payable over the 20 years at the interest rate that's indicated, and connection fees are due and payable instantly when you go to connect with the sewer, unless that changes.
They may have to find the $20,000 to...
The town's match for this would come out of the sewer capital, or it would not come out of operating funds or capital projects funds other than sewer capital.
The interest rate that's set on the $14,000 assessment, is that based on our cost of bonding, or is it already predetermined?
Close the bond.
Okay. I guess we'll send it out. I'm going to move to send a notification to the six affected homeowners and inquiries to their interest in being part of the municipal sewer system.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Capriar?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Citizen Statements and Petitions. Regular Town Council Agenda. Item 7: Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Item A: Economic Development Commission.
EDC met a week ago Monday, and it was another good meeting. We've actually formally changed the meeting site to the former Pro Bay Conference area, and I think there's a new energy in the room. We have a number of things we're compiling, and the commission is working towards a meeting with developers, realtors, property owners, you know, getting a listing of what's going on. And we've been supplied with some of the commercial properties in town, so one of the things that we'll be looking towards is trying to update our town's website, or doing a separate website just for economic development issues, so that it's a little bit more accessible with links to some of the other properties and realtors and cultural events and so forth, so that people can find us a little bit better. So, that was a very productive meeting.
Thank you, Richard. Item B: Permanent Project Building Committee.
The Permanent Project Building Committee met last night, and I'll give a report on the STW conversion. There was a walkthrough with the contractor at the beginning of the month, and he's in the process of developing specs for the heating and ventilation, and most of the grant money, the steep grant money of $200,000, will probably be spent on HVAC. At our next meeting in January, they should have more of a plan for us.
You said contractor, do you mean the design professional?
The architect.
Richard, do we hear anything more about that Steve Brandt for there?
No, I've spoken to Vinny Candy Laura on a couple of occasions, and when last I knew, he had sent a letter to the governor's office asking for a clarification on where it is. There may be some progress tomorrow, I believe. The governor's speaking to the council of small towns in Hartford. Whether he makes a pronouncement there or not, I can't tell. It's not on the governor's website or press release, so we're still waiting to hear on that. We have our fingers crossed.
Item C: Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee.
Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee met last week. They've continued and have completed the lead collection process, and we appreciate their volunteer efforts. They've also directed people to the fresh disposal. Both of those sites are now closed. I should say that this is our second year of doing lead collection at this Whitechuck property instead of the Syncwee property, and I think our savings have been about $5,000 a year by changing the site, and all of that, those leads are being blended in through public works. They were working on it today, so that's been a good change, and the committee is working on a number of initiatives, including increasing recycling at the school, so we're being supportive of that as well.
Thank you, Richard. Item A: Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow on with where we left off with the Permanent Project Building Committee, the intermediate school continues to have some issues that the building, the Permanent Project Building Committee is addressing. Those include inspections and re-certification of the ductwork that's in the building. There was some insulation missing, so we want the building inspector working together with a mechanical design consultant to get that resolved. There are issues with the main doors and the hinges that continue to befuddle everyone, and that's going to go on a short demand letter to the architect with copies to the attorney representing the committee. The computer room door seals are a question of meeting fire code and whether that was addressed in the initial punch list. We believe that it was addressed in the punch list, but we're trying to re-certify that, and we still have issues with the building itself, some of which have been corrected on the roof area with punctures from the HVAC system. And then there's still flood testing that needs to take place in the administrative area, so there is some slow progress, and we have changed, as I think I reported at the last meeting, Anthony Esposito has updated our funding request, and we now understand it's under review for all of our eligible costs under the renovation status with the State Department of Education. On the high school project, I'll defer until the agenda item under unfinished business. On the Whitechuck property, both Fran, Marola, and Kurt Weiss have met with the design folks from Naive's and Young, and that project is moving forward with some background information. I think as some of you know, at Stanley T., there was a Bachi Court that is an Eagle Scout project and Eagle Scout project that is moving forward, and Fran and I took a look at it. It needs some work, but this is a volunteer effort that was approved some time ago by Parks and Recreation Commission, and I believe there's an expiration date on this young man's candidacy for Eagle Scout as his 18th birthday this year. On the Road Improvement Program, Chizzy Drive, as we mentioned before, is needing some drainage work. We will be working over the next several weeks to get that project out to bid so it can be done in winter and repaved in the springtime. Also on my report, under capital, I moved up the Cedar Lake Road Water Service. We have a draft agreement that we're asking for authorization by the state, so that project will move forward and become a project of the town with 100 percent reimbursement from the state of Connecticut. That's worth about $190,000. We've also heard some rumblings that the Route 89 project is moving forward this spring, and we're hearing that from a number of different sources. So, Kurt has sent a formal request to the state UO to verify, because the last we had heard from them, their staff, was that it was pending some funding allocation, but we're hearing other rumblings out there on the street that indicate otherwise, so we're following up on that. Under Emergency Services, we met today, the fire chief and I met today with a young man, Daniel Cassidy, another Eagle Scout candidate, who is going to be doing a fire hydrant marking project. We purchased some under the budget this year, but they're going, they will be doing some fundraising and volunteer mobilization to get the rest of it. In terms of storm cleanup, we have a brush update under unfinished business, so I will just simply tell you that both are done and FEMA reimbursement is pending. And I would like to take a moment to introduce Greg Murak, who is in the audience today as a student at the North Hartford High School, has been doing an independent study with... Could you wave, Greg? He's been doing an independent study with my office from the high school, starting this fall. Did his first sequence studying the election and learning about the electoral process. He has declared himself to be a political science major, God bless him, and has already been accepted at a couple of colleges. So, he will be continuing to stay on and doing some additional work and learning about how the system of the council-manager form of government works, so...
Could you have him explain it to us when he's done?
So, with that, I believe there's one additional item that I provided as background information to you that may have been in the, it was in the envelope marked for executive session, but has to do with Montgomery Village, and there have been, there has been an issue for a number of years now with a retaining wall on the property that has been and was handled by Attorney Yolen on behalf of the town relative to a bond release issue. The bond unfortunately has expired for the project. There is a remaining wall, and I'm cutting to the chase there, there is one retaining wall remaining on this project site that has not been deconstructed as the previous one was, but that is, as I understand it, to be still in good shape. And in order to have a fair chance of the folks from Montgomery Village expressing themselves to the council, I would suggest and would like to put this item on the agenda for the January 6 meeting, so that it can be discussed with the members who represent Montgomery Village and some of whom are here tonight, but also with the recommendation that in the interim or subsequent to that time, the building inspector be instructed to go to the site and will take updated pictures and document where the retaining wall is currently, so that in the future, if there is an issue, there is some historic value to the documentation. So, with that, unless there are any questions, this is the end of my...
I've got a question. On the, on the Bachi Court, and, you know, before I get in trouble, I want to say, you know, I take my hat off to any and all Eagle Scouts that come up with projects. But having sat on the council for as many years as I have, there's been at least two other times when they've come forward with a project, and whenever they're going to build something on town land, it's my memory that the town council has to give that permission. So, either correct me because I'm wrong with that, or tell me how they got permission to go do this without us knowing about it.
I believe the permission came from my office, and it was after, I believe that I have supplied information to the town council in the past, the Bachi Court was discussed as part of the Stanley T. Williams project, especially in the second phase, when we talked about site development work, and when we applied for the steep grant to the state that $500,000, had facility development, Bachi Court, I think it had a picnic area, a pavilion outside, there was a horseshoe pit adjacent to it, and that was planned to be part of Phase Two of the Stanley T. Williams Development Project. That application was approved by the council last July, and I, prior to that, the exterior work was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, that is the technical advisor, as it were, to my office as part of the development project or development process for things that are park or recreation related, which I think we thought this was as part of that project. So, I think it's, in this case, it got a little bit confusing because it's been lingering a little while. This project came, the Bachi Court concept came when, almost a year ago, when the whole announcement came out about...
So, this Eagle Scout told you a year ago he wanted to do a Bachi Court there?
He told not just me, he went to the Parks and Recreation Commission, which is where most of these Eagle candidates go to. They get permission and blessing there, and then it was incorporated into the planning that we did for this project.
Okay, because we haven't seen, I mean, we saw some colored-on pieces of paper by my memory of this, so, so you can, you know, I'll give you a get-out-of-jail-free card for tonight, but, Richard, don't start with the smoke and mirrors with me, okay? Then we'll move on. But I will say this, it's, as long as I'm sitting here, I believe, and maybe the town attorney can weigh in on it, I believe that if something's to be built on town property, the town council is the only agency that can give that permission, and I want to be clear on this, because I'm hearing rumors out there, and I've sat on the council when this came up before, naming buildings, signs, roads, and all that are definitely only the town council's ability, but I'd like, John, to just answer that question if the...
I agree with that.
Okay, great, so I want that? I want everybody listening on TV, naming a building in town is strictly the town council's responsibility, and I'll leave that at that, too. Thank you. Community Events and Presentations. A: Heroes Village.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished ladies and gentlemen of the town council, especially Town Manager Brannigan. I'd like to thank you for giving us time here tonight. Several months ago, I believe it was in September, Mr. Brannigan invited us to take a look at the, what I believe you refer to as the old schoolhouse, for what I guess developers would call an adaptive reuse. I am the, my name is Sean Richardson. I am the Chief Business and Legal Affairs Officer of Heroes Village, LLC. We're a Connecticut LLC, for-profit, I want to make that clear, so there's no misunderstanding. We're a socially conscious, for-profit...
Did you say for-profit or not?
Yes, we're a socially conscious, for-profit, Connecticut Limited Liability Corporation. We're in the business of building and affordable housing for our heroic veterans nationwide. We build transitional housing, we build rental housing, and we build permanent housing. What we have proposed for the council's consideration is to renovate the old schoolhouse into four condominium units, for sale exclusively to veterans of the United States Armed Services, and our distinguished architect, Anthony Pledgie, I think you may know, he's been, I believe it was the zoning and...
Mr. Mayor, CPA.
CPA. And I'd like to introduce our founder and CEO, Antonio Sal Lorenzo, decorated veteran of Vietnam, as was Mr. Pledgie. And Tony Pledgie has done some sketches of what he believes would be the best way to renovate the facility. We don't, we don't want to tear it down, we want to reuse it, keep the basic footprint of it, bring in some more light, but we believe we could put four condominium units in there that we would then sell to veterans at below-market prices with a covenant that they could not just turn around and flip it to anybody but a non-veteran. We are dedicated to, whenever legally possible, using only veteran labor, because the unemployment rate amongst our veterans is a scandal, we believe. We only build with American-made materials and... We don't, we don't want to tear it down, we want to reuse it, keep the basic footprint of it, bring in some more light, but we believe we could put four condominium, condominium units in there that we would then sell to veterans at below market prices with a covenant that they could not just turn around and flip it to anybody but a non-veteran. We are dedicated to, whenever legally possible, using only veteran labor because the unemployment rate amongst our veterans is a scandal, we believe. We only build with American-made materials and appliances because we think this, this country needs to get back to work. Admittedly, this is a modest-sized project for us, but we would be most pleased to undertake it at our expense on behalf of the town. Granting the town any easements necessary for access to, I believe there's another property on it, Mr. Brannigan, I forget what it's called, but that's abutted to it, but we'd of course grant the town any necessary easements. And upon completion sale, it would be turned over to the Small Homeowners Association formed by veterans in that, in that facility. We'd probably call it Heroes Village North Branford and dedicated to one of the fallen soldiers from this town and one of our ongoing far-too-long conflicts. And I believe you have our presentation in front of you and some questions that Mr. Brannigan asked me to, to answer. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, more than happy to do so, so is our founder and architect. Mr. Pledgie has some preliminary sketches that he has, so I, I open the floor to you and I look forward to any questions you may have.
What is the arrangement between Heroes Village and the town of North Branford in terms of the conveyance of the land before you start converting this building into condominiums?
Thank you for that question. We have not decided on that yet. There, as, as an attorney, I believe there are two possibilities. One is basically the conveyance in fee simple title to Heroes Village's special project company for this project for, let's say, a dollar. The other would be a long-term, let's say, 99-year land lease of the project that'll be renewable. We are, I don't want to say indifferent, it's a little more legal expense for us to do a ground lease than a simple conveyance and easement, but one of those arrangements would be the likely conveyance. It's really up to the town.
You're a for-profit entity, but you're asking us to essentially give you the land and the building?
Well, that's, I don't want to say yes to that, but in essence, what we're proposing is that we take a building that right now is off the tax rolls, frankly is a bit blighted. We renovate it at our own expense, put it back on the tax rolls for the town, and then step away from the project. So I want to characterize it, with all due respect, as us, you've given it to us, that's one way to look at it. We look at it as us taking a property that's fallen into disrepair and making it a productive part of the town with tax-paying citizens who are veterans of the armed forces.
I, I think, you know, your suggestion is, is a noble one, and I'm certainly inclined to be all ears when it comes to proposals that are going to help veterans, but I'm troubled when you identify yourself and make a point saying you're a for-profit entity and in the next breath saying, "Give us the land and give us this rundown building and we'll make it something you can tax." But that's really not the way it generally works if you're a for-profit operation.
I can, I can certainly see your point, council member. I would like to say, not in our defense, just as a matter of explanation, we were invited to make a proposal for this building with the full knowledge of the town, that we are not a 501(c)(3), that we are developers who have frankly a very large master plan for this nation to build housing and put our veterans back to work. General Shinchecki has asked us to build 90,000 homes by 2015, a goal frankly we won't be able to meet. We're hoping to build 30,000 nationwide, but we are headquartered in Connecticut and we expect to build a significant number of homes, rentals, and other facilities and do vocational training in Connecticut. We are not asking the town for a dime with respect to remediation of this facility, which I can assure you is in hundreds of thousands of dollars. We are prepared to undertake all expenses at our own expense.
You gave us a number of 450,000.
That doesn't include remediation of the asbestos, that's simply construction costs. The, we believe the remediation costs, although we haven't gotten it down to the penny, are north of $200,000. So I can assure you, this is not something that we're doing to greatly enrich ourselves. I didn't say we're doing it for nothing, I'm simply stating that.
What's your projected resale cost per unit?
What we would do is, I'm guessing it would be in the range of $200,000 per unit, which would be probably about 25% less than what a comparable condominium would cost in the town. We intend to give the veterans immediate equity, that's why we want to, we want them to be below market prices. We do not want anyone to default on their mortgages. And let me back up a bit. Each GI, when they come out of the service, is, is given a new GI bill. They're in effect guaranteed a mortgage of up to about $417,000 in most cases. For certain high-cost communities, it could go higher, but using 417 as your benchmark is a good number. Not every veteran, although they're guaranteed a mortgage, the wrinkle is they're not qualified for the mortgage. They have to demonstrate to a financial institution that they can pay this mortgage back. And we certainly don't want, because we're, frankly, we're a brand, and the most important thing to us is our relationship with the members of the armed forces. And we want to make sure that our men and women don't default on these mortgages, that's why we're pricing them below market. The same thing that we would be doing with rental properties that we're developing in other cities around the state.
How long has Heroes Village been around?
It was incorporated in December 2010, so you could characterize this as a startup.
What other towns are you in now?
We will be building in Bridgeport, we have a project on the books in East Haven.
With all due respect, the project in East Haven, you purchased that property, correct?
Yes, sir.
Outright purchased.
Yes, sir.
How about Bridgeport?
Bridgeport, there are three buildings that Mayor Finch wants us to build.
Purchase or?
Purchase, that's correct.
Richard?
May I just interject? I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. These gentlemen were referred to my office and, and we looked at a couple of facilities, they had this facility in mind. From, from the start, and there's no way to advance a concept without taking it to the council to, to get some kind of feedback so that they know how they can move forward, whether it's possible or not. But above all else, this process has to be a public process. The council, if you are interested in moving forward with this redevelopment, any redevelopment of that site, there has to be a public process to allow that, a request for proposal, so that they and other interested developers would have the opportunity to advance a project concept and then take care of the other issues that come with it, the zoning issues, the legal issues, the conveyance issues, the remediation issues, all of those things. So what you're hearing tonight is a concept that may be part of other concepts that are possible, but as we move forward on that particular site, this is one way to, to start the footsteps forward.
Yes, thank you. If I may, because Mr. Brannigan has been so, I can't use any word but kind to us and welcoming in terms of our proposals, so again, I want to thank him. And we, we are here to begin the process of hopefully gaining the blessing of this body for us to do this project. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I just have one, one question. How, with Bridgeport and East Haven, how did we get to become the chosen town to be asked to be given the property, with the other two towns being purchases?
Well, every, every, all of our projects come to us in different ways, to be honest with you. And our chief architect brought the project to our attention, or this potential project to our attention. We began to discuss it with your town manager here, and we have shown sketches, shown various proposals.
I think right now, like Richard has stated, this is in a conceptual stage right now.
Yes, we would, we would feel the same way, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Did you approach the other towns in the beginning? Did you ask them to give you the land, or did you outright offer them to buy the land?
We, we have, I will start with East Haven. We didn't approach the municipality at all. We simply went and purchased land that we felt, let me back up one second. Part of what we need, part of what I would like the council to understand is, it's important that the residents of these facilities be close to VA facility. There is a facility, as you know, in West Haven, and Route 80 lies along, very, is in very good proximity, it has a bus line, and that is one of the reasons that the towns along this corridor are of interest to us. We did purchase some property in East Haven, it's currently in the P&amp;Z process. With respect to Waterbury, frankly, we were offered to come in, we were asked to come in by the newly sworn-in mayor, Mayor O'Leary, graciously, and view various properties. Mayor Finch has been extremely gracious in having his economic development people take us throughout the city of Bridgeport to look at properties. And with respect to this distinguished town, we came upon this schoolhouse because of Mr. Pledgie, who knew the property, saw the potential for it to become a place where veterans could live in a dignified manner, and that's why we're here to bring this proposal to you.
Your company would be responsible for all environmental cleanups with that project?
We're prepared to do that, yes.
And did you go around and do a box, escalate of condos in this town, well, not many condos in this town, that goes up 200,000 at all? There's maybe one, one set of units that's on a golf course that are around 200,000 right now. Everything is probably from 160 to 114 for condos in this town right now. So your 200,000 number is a little above the average price of a condo in this town.
As you, as you said, sir, we're in a preliminary stage, and.
Everything we saw.
Your numbers may very well be 100% accurate, I don't want to get into a.
Yeah, there's nothing to get into. It's your opinion or whatever, my opinion, but I mean, I pretty much know what real estate goes for in this town.
And I, I respect that. I'm simply, I'm simply here to state our desire to.
I think, I think that we do have a concept. I think right now, this needs to be looked at further by the council.
Yeah, I've, I've got some comments, and, and I'm going to make them as a developer. And also as a counselor who, everything we've seen on, ever since the discussion was brought to us about, you know, with the new Route 80 and Wallfield is moving, that's a commercial piece of property and, you know, the, all the conceptual things we've seen, that school was knocked down. And the value, from a developer's point of view, the value for that property probably is to knock down the town hall building also. But without that building gone, we don't have the value to that town hall building, there's no parking. So I, I think that we should have had this discussion maybe before you guys got here, at least, and I'm speaking for myself. But again, the value to that property is that hill needs to be flattened, used as fill on some of the rest of the materi, on the rest of the site. And, and then you've got a commercial piece of property that could be developed, and, you know, I, I just don't see this, I don't see a town that has, you know, 200-some foreclosures given anything for a nominal fee that bites us in the butt twice because it takes the value out of the rest of the property.
Of course, there's not.
Great idea, I would suggest maybe talking to the water authority, they, they have a bunch of land that they're trying to sell or get rid of, and then you wouldn't have the environmental cleanups, you know, they've got a lot of land in town, so.
All due respect to Mr. Deputy Mayor, you know, we have, we're probably looking at, what, three dozen projects along with this one, just in a 20-mile radius. We're still a relatively small company, growing quickly. We would love to house veterans in the town of North Haven, I think it would be great benefit to the town. We would like to get that building back in the tax rolls.
North Branford.
Excuse me, North Branford. And we would love to get that building back in the tax rolls. We, what I don't think we're prepared to do is to embark on a town-wide, lot-by-lot assessment of what would be the best property. If there, if there is a piece of land specifically that the town feels we should look at, we'd be happy to. All I'm saying is that this is what we were shown.
Right, right.
And pretty much everywhere we go, people show us.
Sure.
Properties, and all I'm saying is, we were shown this one piece of property, so, and I, I live in Weston, my partner lives in Westport, I have to admit, an unfamiliarity with each of the.
I mean, like, how many units would be going, let's say, in the East Haven Heroes Village?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. And you're proposing four units here?
That's all to fit.
Right, exactly. And that's where, right.
Excuse me, I've been doing this for 30 years, okay? I don't make money off my fellow veterans after they suffered blood, sweat, and tears, okay? I'm trying to give my veterans a dignified home to live in which they fought for, okay? And that's all I'm trying.
Right, well, that's why I was going.
If I make a dollar, I'm happy.
Right, but I'm saying, if you.
That's it, that's simple, that's what it comes down to. And that's why Bridgeport is giving us buildings for a dollar. Because we're not in there just to make money off my guys' blood and sweat. See, I'm a veteran, I've been doing this for over 30 years, okay? So developers that come in and they look, they're Johnny Come-Latelys, and they want to make money off the veterans, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't go with. So that's why it's not important of how much money we're making on that project, it's important to give them a dignified home and a beautiful area to live in. And that's all I want to do. That's all I want to do for my veterans.
Well, that's why I was asking, if you, you know, a different parcel, you may be able to get more units rather than four units.
We're totally open, like I said, we're just showing that first piece.
All, all we were, and this is nothing, Mr. Brannigan, Mr. Brannigan is so gracious to us. We were shown this piece of property, asked to make a proposal, our chief architect did a beautiful job in, you know, reimagining its use, and that's what we've done.
Sure.
And could we make, as you say, more money as a developer, sir? Could we make more money on another parcel in North Branford? Perhaps.
I didn't say that you should make more money, I'm saying, I don't see, you know, we're not Weston and Westport, okay? We're North Branford, and we have 220 houses foreclosed on. So set us, what I'm saying is, I'm looking out for the taxpayer of North Branford and the veterans of North Branford, and the value of that property. This is the, and again, this is the first that I'm hearing anything about Heroes Village. And this board here, again, should have been, we should have been talking, this, before you guys were invited here, it should have been discussed here. So that's not, and I, so I apologize from the town of North Branford for that. But for me, I don't, I don't want to see you waste any, waste any more time or money on that piece of property, I can't vote for that piece of property. It's, it's, it's valued to the people of North Branford and the veterans that live in this town is the highest and best use.
See, what Al's trying to get to is, there's not a lot of land in this town to develop commercially. There's that Route 80 corridor, and there's not much land on it. So that's a commercial piece of property. So that's worth to the taxpayers of the town, a lot more as a commercial piece of property. If we could put you guys on a parcel near wherever, the water company's selling hundreds of acres, I mean, and they want to get rid of them, they're in a beautiful wooded section near the reservoir, actually. Maybe you guys could look at something like that, but Al's getting at that, that that's one of the few commercial pieces of property we have in this town to develop. And it's hard to just, you know, put four units on there and get taxes off four units. When you, as a developer, you know, that piece of land, we could bring in something a lot, a lot bigger and bring in more tax dollars for the people.
I agree.
Obviously, I agree.
And if you guys could look at another parcel where you could build more units for the veterans and maybe get a deal from whoever, the water company or whoever, it might work out great for everybody in this town, veterans, the taxpayers, and everybody.
And I would say that, and since we are in preliminary stages, as everyone is fully aware of.
I think, I think at this time, right now, I mean, this is the first the council has seen that.
It's going to have to take further looking.
We need to look at this further.
You guys have drawings?
Excuse me, sir.
Do you have drawings for this concept?
Yes, sir.
You can show them to us, we'd love to see them. You can show them to us, we'd love to see them. Whoever, I mean, just kind of hold them up. Al, actually, show them, show them to Al, because he knows that stuff more than I do.
The concept is tremendous, it's just, we'll need more time to digest this.
We would love to accommodate you, believe me.
Well, we're all, you know, we're all, that was the first piece of property we showed, and we thought, okay, we can come in, save some money with the abatement, we'll do all, do all the environmentals, and, and just the house for it.
I totally agree, the reason that building hasn't been found...
Twenty thousand.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
That was built in 1920.
It'd be a great way to work something out and make everybody happy.
Definitely.
I would love to see that.
And, you know, I think for that very reason, I'll, I'll say that, I think for that very reason, that the abatement itself is so cost prohibitive, and that we are willing to assume that responsibility, in writing, of course, as covenant, that the council should give extra consideration to that, because any developer that comes in there is going to go, whoa. You know, and, you know, we knew that when we walked through, we're like, oh, that's us, yep, you know, it took us all 30 seconds to price out pretty much what it would cost, but, you know, because of, you know, the business framework, we're in a position to get it done, and we believe a far more reasonable price than the town will accomplish, and that, we believe should be part of the consideration of us doing this, that's all we ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, you want to...
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for serving our country, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Roger? I'm sorry.
Brother Monk, Walnut Lane, I had a meeting with Richard last week in reference to some kind of a senior tax break. And what we sort of came up with was possibly a tax freeze. What's gotta happen, it's gotta go through the town council. And there should be people like maybe me and some of the other people who are at our meeting, at this meeting, and discuss means of doing this. It's probably gonna have to be done around, you know, after the first of the year, but it's gonna have to be done through the town council, it can't be, you just can't say to do it. And there's gotta be income caveats, there's gotta be longevity caveats, there's gotta be all kinds of things added to this. So, I'm hoping that maybe we can get something together.
Well, I know me and you just touched briefly on it, and after the first of the year, we're gonna, we're gonna see to the, listen to the council and see what we could put together.
Let me know, or let Richard know, and I'll be here, if you want me here, I'll be here, and we can sit down and discuss.
No, he is, he is talking to...
And I'd just like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you, Roger.
Good evening, this is Howard Catravitz. I am a member of the Montgomery Village Condominium Association Board of Directors, I'm an officer. I'm also an attorney, and I'm the individual that penned the letter that got Mr. Brannigan to discuss with you this evening the problem that we have. I, I just very briefly want to give you a little backstory, so that when you're considering our request, and what we have requested is that the town step into the shoes of the issuer of the performance bond. Performance bond is a letter of credit that was issued by Webster Bank. Webster Bank, at some point, put a termination date on the bond. We were assured by the town, first, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously passed a motion stating that the bond would be kept in effect until such time as the walls, our retaining walls, until such time as they were assured that the retaining walls had been properly built, built to specification. Mr. Brannigan signed a letter along with your then-town council, Tim Yolan, stating essentially the same thing, that the bond would be kept in force until these matters had been resolved. Unfortunately, the bond was allowed to expire, and we were never notified of the expiration date.
Was it a bond or a letter of credit?
Well, it was a letter of credit that was, that was the bond. The letter of credit was callable as a bond if the developer failed to perform. So it was the performance bond. And the developer failed to perform in a number of different instances. One were these, we had three retaining walls. We got the developer actually to repair one of them, he tore it down and he rebuilt it, and it is now functioning fine. He was supposed to clean the, the blocks, we allowed him to reuse all the blocks, and they were filthy because of the way the wall had been constructed the first time around. It's not been cleaned, and it's, it's kind of messy looking. The other wall, we agreed to have deconstructed a small portion of it, so that we could determine whether or not that wall was built properly. We have no idea how that wall was built. The town building official at the time frankly let down the residents of Montgomery Village because those walls require a building permit, he never made the developer get a building permit, and he obviously was aware that those walls were being built, there were 50 homes being built up there, so he had to been running up and down Montgomery Drive a couple times a week. There's no way he could have not seen those walls being built. Subsequent to that, in sort of a succession of errors, the, the successor issued a, a certificate of compliance on Walls Two and Three on the basis of the developer's engineer's report saying, they look okay.
So, the wall, and engineering...
That was withdrawn. I, I objected vociferously to that, and he...
Were there architectural drawings for these walls?
Pardon?
Were there architectural drawings or engineering for the walls?
Oh, yeah, the town housing. There were just, no permit was ever taken out to build the walls, the walls were never inspected during construction.
So the builder never came and got permits?
The builder did not come to get the permit. But my, my complaint is that the building official is driving up and down Montgomery Drive, like I said, a couple days a week, because he's got 50 houses he's inspecting at various stages. There's no way he could have not seen those walls going up. I mean, unless he was blind. And there's one of them, right as you turn into Montgomery Village, you can't miss it. And then, of course, we have the failure of, of the town to notify us that the bond was going to expire, despite the fact that we had received assurances from both planning and zoning, Mr. Brannigan and your town council, that that bond would be kept into effect until such time as everything was resolved. Now, we have claims beside the walls that we were making against the developer. The way, the way this all came to a head was, I was informed late last fall, early in the winter, by the developer's attorney that, that they were broke, that they could not respond to our, our requests. And at that point, I wrote a letter and said, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and said, we'd like to call the bond and, and have these items taken care of. And that, that's when I was subsequently, before the hearing took place, I was informed that there was no bond. So, my point is, in, in terms of your thinking about this, is, we really have been, we're in this position because the town made a series of mistakes, from, from the building official who didn't demand permits to the, to allowing the, the bond to expire without giving us notice and an opportunity to make claim on it. And, so, I think a ruling has been committed, and I think it should be righted, and I've asked the town to step into the shoes of the holder of the bond, of the, excuse me, of the issuer of the bond, the bank, and respond to the problems that we have that are covered by the bond.
When were these buildings erected?
These buildings were erected starting in, I moved in in 19, mid-1950, I'm sorry, in 2005. And some people were already there, I think some people moved in in 2004, and other people moved in in 2006.
So all these walls had to be built before these houses were built?
No, these walls were probably built, they were built while the houses were being built.
How tall are these walls?
They're higher than six feet, which is what I believe, I think that's the height at which you need a permit.
See, 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 and I know we're gonna, I guess we're gonna have you on the agenda at the next meeting, or, I thought I heard that...
Mr. Brannigan mentioned January 6th, by my reckoning, that's a Friday.
And aren't these, aren't these the stackable block walls?
I'm sorry, sir?
Aren't these the stackable block walls? These aren't a concrete cord wall?
No, no, they're blocks.
They're the stackable blocks.
The earmark.
They're the two on one side. See, so, as a builder, I will tell you that they're designed to fail, okay? From the, from the design of those things, they're designed to fail. And if you walk along anybody's or any shopping plaza, or get down to the Big Y and look at these walls that have been built, as the frost pushes on them, they fail. And now, as a licensed building official, I'll tell you, I would be careful stating that, you know, I would check for, when you come back at the next meeting, with the state building official, and see if a temporary structure, which is what these are, okay, they're just blocks stacked on top of each other, actually requires a building permit. So, those were things that somehow we need to have answered before this goes on.
The state building inspector signed off on the letter between us and the builder in terms of what needed to be done. So he agreed. I spoke, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but actually, the letter, I believe I gave you copies of all the letters. So there was a letter, and you'll find, I think his name is Tierney, and he, he's from the state building inspector's office, and he signed off on it. And the building code says that any retaining wall higher than six feet requires a permit, okay? And the, by the way, I'll tell you what the issue is. The problem was that the specs require the wall to have 12 inches of stone put in behind the blocks, to allow the water coming down the hill to drain down...
And they require an adding that goes out between every other corner.
Yeah, yeah, yes, right. And the problem is...
A bunch of them.
That they didn't put the stone in. They, I mean...
With all due respect, when you hired this contractor...
We didn't hire him, sir.
No, they, they built as part of the association.
Oh, okay, all right.
We didn't hire him.
Ah, I see, okay.
I mean, I, I'm just, look, every, you know, we're all people, we all make mistakes. I'm, I'm not here to blame people in that sense, but in the sense that we have...
Are there fences on top of these walls?
I'm sorry, the what?
Are there fences on top of these walls?
Yes, we put fences up, so nobody would...
No, did the, was the developer required to put fences up? Or did the association put them up?
Marie Diamond, our president, is in the audience. Yeah, there are fences there, though.
I was gonna say, otherwise you're gonna walk off a six-foot wall.
Yeah, no, we, we try to avoid that at all costs. But I...
But they are, those walls are not, by any stretch of the imagination, a, you know, they're not a wall that's gonna last.
Our, our point is, our point...
Okay? And, and, and you know what? If you had a wall that was gonna last, your condos would have cost a lot more money.
Our, our point is that that wall comes with a set of specifications. It requires a building permit. All we want to know is that those walls were built in accordance with specifications. We now know that one wall was, because it was completely rebuilt, okay? We don't know about the other two walls. And that's, okay, the other problem is we have...
Are they falling down?
No, sir, no. But, you know, I'm, I, I, I'm old, and I'm planning on living a long time, and, and I don't want to have to pay for the walls twice. So, I would like to know that they're built according to specification. I would like to know that they were inspected as the permit requires them to be. They weren't, all right? I mean, that's, that's my point. I, I certainly don't expect the town to guarantee the life of the walls, that's not what I'm here for. I just want to make sure that they were put in properly in the first instance. But in the second instance, we have other items. We're under the impression that this bond is still out there, because we haven't been notified by the town that the bond is gonna terminate. So we have four or five other claims against the bond that we were prevented from making because we'd never received notice, as the town promised, that, that the bond was going to expire. All of this set forth in a letter, but I just wanted kind of to give you the story, so that when you're thinking about it, there's some recognition that we're, we're here really...
So they're gonna be on the agenda, this is citizen statements, at a, at a meeting?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. And John, do you have a file on this at all, or are you familiar with this?
Attorney Yola will have to handle that.
Okay. But I mean, I don't know what we're gonna do, put on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
When will the next meeting be?
January 3rd.
January 3rd.
It's Tuesday.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I'm not a loss, I'm not a loss of all this, that's before my time.
And here's the thing, if they didn't take a permit, why would it be inspected?
Right.
Good evening, Joe Tenzar, a town employee, Board of Education, 41-year veteran of, of education in education, in the Celebration of Excellence, State Department of Education, 93. I'm here tonight, actually, to give you a gift, and, but there's a reason for it. I was here during the elections, the candidate speeches, and there were things that were brought up, some very negative things. And the committed teachers of the school system really believe that it is so important that we are in total, we are totally united with you. And I, one of the things that we all know as part of this council is how expensive education is. It is your biggest chunk of change, as I heard that, the other, during those elections. Tonight, I want to give you a gift, because this is, this, this gift is more than just the commencement exercises at our high school. This is our town. You know, Richard, when I see you at the Potato Fest, and I see so many of your faces there, I've taught your grandsons, your sons, coached and taught your daughters, but it's not just me, it's hundreds of these teachers that are so committed. And when you are at the Potato Fest, and you see your town coming together as one, that's what a town and a family is all about. We are the only high school in America, if you can imagine this, this small little town, that produces a graduation video that's actually won a couple awards already from AT&amp;T. They no longer have these awards. But the reason I'm saying that is, it's, sometimes we have nine and 10 cameras, but what those cameras catch is what you see at, for instance, our Potato Fest. And that is a community coming together. So if you look at this DVD, which is almost two hours long, you're going to see something more than just kids getting a diploma. You're going to see truly where some of your money is going. And if I have to be kind of a bridge, then so be it. But we appreciate every time we come up for, you know, our budget comes up, that we, we come to a, a final number, and that number is very, very expensive. And this is, I hate to say it, it sounds meek, but this is all you get. But if you really open your eyes, and if you really open your hearts, this is your town encapsulated. I cannot be any more sincere about that. more sincere about that. And so when you get a chance down the line, please watch this in its entirety, because there is more than just diplomas being handed out here. This is your town, and you should be very, very proud of every facet of this town. We'll work on, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't speak for the Board of Education, I do not speak for my superintendent, but I do speak for every teacher that I work with every day. And we're in the building sometimes at five forty-five, and we're getting out at eleven thirty. Just look at the windows that are on. Those aren't teachers that left lights on. Those are teachers that are still burning the candle. And I say, and I contend, for every dollar you spend on education from the teaching staff at, in our school system, I swear to you, you're getting at least three to five dollars back on that dollar, all right? And I want you to understand that. So that's what this is about. Our gift, my students' gift, to this town council. And there'll be more. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Enjoy the plastic.
Do you want one?
Is it in Blu-ray?
No, I don't have Blu-ray. That's, we have far ahead.
Thank you.
And I just wanna mention, this Saturday morning, at ten AM, at the Atwater Memorial Library, there'll be an accountant there from Picard and Biscani Associates to discuss the upcoming tax changes and laws for two thousand and twelve. It's sponsored by The Chamber. All are welcome. It should be interesting, and there will be refreshments served. Again, it's ten AM at the Atwater Library. Thank you. Moving on to resignations and appointments. I'm sorry.
Resignation and appointments, I believe, is a typographical error.
I've already corrected it.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, sir.
Thank you. Item eleven, resignations and appointments. A, resignation, Suzanne Kalakowski, Library Board of Directors.
I'd like to move her, accept her resignation with regret.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
B, resignation, Anthony Ferriolo, Parks and Rec Commission.
Like to move that with regret. Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Uh, C, appointment, William Delacamera replaces Gerald Adenoffi, Agricultural Commission, term to expire nine thirty, two thousand and thirteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
D, appointment, Ashley Joyner replaces Melinda Fonda in Lynn and Wylens, term to expire twelve thirty-one thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Item E, appointment, Carol Abellandi replaces Anthony Ferriolo on Parks and Recreation Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one fourteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
F, appointment, Melinda Fonda replaces Donna Andruski, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire twelve thirty-one thirteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item G, reappointment, David Standard, Board of Assessment Appeals, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
H, reappointment, Dan Army, Economic Development, term to expire twelve thirty-one fourteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item I, reappointment, Anthony Delacamera, Board of Fire Commissioners, term to expire twelve one fourteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item J, reappointment, Arthur Feldman has Waste and Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve thirty-one thirteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item K, reappointment, Christopher Cozy, Police Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one fourteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item I, reappointment, David Palumbo, Police Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one fourteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Counselor Wentworth. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
M, reappointment, Victor Palmer, Parks and Recreation Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one thirteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Twelve, unfinished business. A, brush removal update.
Who's taking that?
Mr. Mayor, as I led into during the manager's report, pleased to say that the brush cleanup from the October thirtieth storm has been completed. The pile is now at the Switech property. It's probably twenty to thirty percent bigger than the hurricane pile that was there, which has now been completely chipped by Northeast Land Theory, successful bid on that project.
I'm sorry, who was that, Richard?
The chipper company, Northeast Land Theory, believes the low bidder. And we have a bid on the street now for the, the October storm cleanup, Storm Alfred, and that will be a separate pile and will be put into a separate location on site. All of the curbside collection has been completed by combination of public works and contractual services. And my, in front of the council, and I'm pleased that Fran is here, because his crew, twice inside a three-month span, did a total townwide cleanup that they've never accomplished before, and in both cases cleaned up the town within two weeks of the start date. So I think commendation goes to Public Works once again for a job well done.
We commend you, Fran. Good job.
And we will have a pre-bid meeting later this week on the, on the brush pile that's at Switech now. So all of the other reports are being compiled for FEMA between Fran and his staff, and Anthony and his office. So we will be submitting for reimbursement. And I believe that from the first storm, Anthony will have a better idea in the financial report, but we received our bar in line for our FEMA reimbursement, all but five thousand dollars of expenses.
Richard, does FEMA reimburse for the fuel as well, for, you know, the trucks, the chippers, everything?
They give you a per-hour rate. That's where it's, it's built into that.
Right.
So many hours you use it, it's low, how many hours you use it.
Go ahead.
Any question? Okay, thank you.
Slow's next.
Okay. Item B, North Bramford High School Roof Project.
Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up to the last night Permanent Project Building Committee meeting, their, this item was on the agenda. Pleased to report that, again, Public Works and with combination of school staff, had come up with a design for improving the drainage and getting water off the roof areas that have been patched. And that has been completed. The bills were approved last night. I think the total bill for materials is somewhere only around a thousand dollars. So it is working effectively. There was one more minor puncture in the roof membrane from an area that was previously handled in the large gym roof. That was repaired almost immediately, within three hours that was repaired from the first notification. But with the understanding, as the council clearly has, that the roof needs to be replaced in earnest. And my understanding is, and it was reported last night, that the EDO forty-nine has been completed by the Board of Education. But to go into phase two, there is a need for architectural services to put a stamp on what's been designed to date, and also to cover the remaining replacement of the roof. So the question from the Permanent Project Building Committee that I was asked to convey to the council was whether they should proceed with drafting what would be a specification for the council to take a look at with them for architectural services for the phase two of the North Bramford High School roof project. There is funding that remains available in the roof project budgets that was, that was established by the council and sent to the Permanent Project Building Committee. I think that number is somewhere around forty thousand dollars. So we're looking for some direction back to the Permanent Project Building Committee to start to draft those, that request, and get the council's input on it, and then take this to the neck, to the next step.
So this would be to look for the next sections that need new roof?
Or to replace, or-
Right, to replace the whole thing.
To replace the whole remaining roof to-
Well, I, I think that we don't have a choice but, you know, to do this. And it's not an emergency if we do it now. So, you know, we can get proposals and- So.
You have the specialist roofing specialist, you know, that whole thing. But the gymnasium now, it's not leaking anymore at the high school.
My understanding is the gymnasium and the roof is not leaking, nor is the wellness center. The two roofs that were completely replaced by the separate contractors.
Those are complete, great.
And they've got very little leaking in, in remaining.
Right. So-
How about the intermediate school? How'd we make out with the last couple of big rains? Or whatever they call that school now?
I received no new information from them. I would normally get a report that-
That leak.
X, Y, and Z, either they've grown tolerance of that, or there were no leaks, or I can't imagine that there weren't some leaks. I, I think in the C and D section, when they resolved those roof penetrations with the HVAC system, that helped a great deal in the older section. And there was a joint between the old building and the new building that was addressed, I believe, as well. It's the administration offices in the front that still have yet to be addressed.
So then, once the summer comes, we're gonna have to come up with more of a permanent fix for the drainage on the piping that we did to move that water off the roof?
I think when the rest of the roof is reduced, Mark Budo's idea was that it would be accommodated in whether a system of leers were gutters established would be in the next phase.
Right. I, I think that we should make, should send it to the building committee that we want that fixed correctly with the next phase.
That's everyone's understanding. So if I'm to understand this, we can go forward, have them take a look. Our staff will start to put together and simultaneously share it with both the council and the Permanent Project Building Committee. And ultimately, of course, the council would have final say on the architect selected for the project.
You said there was like thirty thousand dollars left in that, roughly, something like?
I, I've asked Anthony to take another look at it. I think we had some contingency money that we didn't spend, because Barrett's, in terms of the patching, their unit numbers were fairly competitive. So even with the additional drainage, I don't, I think it's over thirty thousand dollars that's left in the, in the budget.
Thanks, Richard. Thank you. Thirteen, new business discussion in action regarding the Communications Committee discussion. You know, we were setting up this Communications Committee. I don't see Chief Seward here. I think I'm gonna ask for maybe a motion to table.
Tabled those appointments the last time?
We only made a couple. We really need Chief Seward, I think, here. Joseph Atello had called me and made, expressed interest. I, I think there's a few more people, key people that need to be involved with it.
I'll second Julian's motion to table it.
Carry it on the next agenda, or?
Yeah, on the next agenda. Moved the table by Counselor Wentworth.
Second.
Seconded by, I believe, Counselor Fawnin, or Esposito, I'm sorry, by Counselor Esposito. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose? Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item B, Company Two Sewer Connection Fee Funding.
This kinda goes back to September, when the WPCA voted to allow Company Two to hook into sanitary sewer in North River Center as a result of their septic system failing. Subsequent discussions that was held at the Finance Committee talked about the funding mechanism, if you recall. The last station that was done was Company Three on a twenty-year assessment through the White Hollow Sewer Project. Net impact is that the company is made whole through the operating fund budget, as I've attached here for it. The new mentality now, with it being a special connection fee, you're basically requiring Company Two to put a twelve thousand dollar check up to get the connection fee, only to reimburse them that same amount of money. Doesn't make any sense to keep shuffling the papers back and forth. Doesn't make any sense to keep shuffling the papers back and forth. The difficulty is, in the current year's budget, there was no money budgeted in general fund budget to allow for this, as there was in Company Three's status. The Finance Committee was to allow Company Two to connect this sanitary sewer currently and then build the $12,000 over four, three, $4,000 increments over the next three years into the general fund budget. And basically internally move the money from the general fund to the sewer capital fund, which is how it ends up in the long run anyway. They're looking to do it before the heavy frost gets into the ground, the system has failed the firehouse, and they want to be treated equally as Company Three was. Let's put it both ways, basically.
They didn't already put the sewers in there?
Oh, the sewers, and they haven't tied into it yet.
Oh, okay.
Wait until the connection fee issue is resolved.
I'll move the resolution. The North Branford Town Council votes to allow Northford Department, Company Two, to hook up their facility in 1370 Oak Avenue without paying the special connection fee, $12,000 prior to receiving the permit for state installation. Rather than $12,000, it would be built into the fire department budget over the next three years at $4,000 per year and internally transferred to the sewer capital fund. Should additional general fund dollars be available, the schedule can be accelerated.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth? I'm sorry, yes. I'm too fast to keep you missing.
Item C, Mirma Workers' Comp Update.
Could we go back to that just for a second here? Anthony, could you, I want to get that straight. So typically, the fire department would pay the $12,000. We would then, out of the general fund, give it back and then it would go into the sewer?
Well, they would pay their, like Company Three does it, like any other homeowner does it. Twice a year, they pay their assessment to the town.
Okay.
But they get back fit in the general fund budget. So in effect, they're made whole for the assessment.
So they don't pay it?
They don't pay any of it out of pocket.
Okay.
For a twenty-year period.
Why would the firehouse, why, it seems like there's an awful lot of work being done here for the firehouse to hook up to the sewer?
That's to try and to simplify the process. Instead of you give them a check, we give them a check. And so we're just going to eliminate the check and then internally...
Since we're on this, I'd like to, since we're talking about sewers, I think, guys, that, you know, in talking to, you know, just things like that, but, and then other businesses in town that are trying to do stuff, I don't think we've got it right yet. And I think in a future, a future meeting, we need to look at this again, these fees. But, you know, we don't need to put it on the next agenda, but we do need, I don't think it's right yet. I think that there's some, we would be chasing new people or people adding on out of town with the way this stuff is.
I agree with that. I think we should have a discussion of it once it's settled.
All right, great. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
That was sewer connection fees, which we had in our discussion.
Right.
The $1,400.
I think we can discuss these assessments too, for...
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm thinking the, like, yeah, the 12, 3, and then the $4,000 per unit, and what is a unit and all that.
Okay. I'll mention that.
Can you put it on the next agenda?
WPCA agenda.
Yes.
Mirma, Mirma Workers' Comp Update.
Well, we have some good news. Richard and I have been going to the Mirma meetings annually. And you'll notice that the amount that we have to budget in the upcoming year has gone down. As was anticipated, the further the claims go out, they become more firmer numbers versus speculative number that the folks at Mirma had initially put aside. So on the town side, we had paid $58,000 for the current year. That's going down to 41.6 as of next year's budget. And on the Board of Ed side, the second page in, they paid roughly $40,000 this year, going down to $27,000 next year.
Is that the end of the cost?
Uh, no, the balance, you see, there's basically two more years left.
And it will likely, as we understand it, it will likely decline in the next two years as well. We don't anticipate, unless there's a major spike in claims that have not been reported. But it's the injuries, it's the forecast of what those injuries of unknown value will going to be that's influencing it. We also included in this package a report from our insurance carrier, HDC, your insurance, on our workers' comp insurance experience. And you can see that we're seeing a decrease in the number of claims over just this three-year period. And unfortunately, we have other information that we can supply historically, but that was based on Mirma. This is since we've left Mirma. So it's a fairly accurate description. And we can go back several years if we wanted to do the legwork. But you can see that our loss experience is declining and the value of the claims incurred is declining as well. That will help us when we come up for workers' comp renewal. We saw pretty much a decline last year in our rate. And Travelers is looking for this to decline as well in the coming year. So I think we're headed in the right direction. We do have a safety committee meeting here tomorrow morning. And all the departments will be represented or be put in at their own. But we've reminded all the department heads to have either their representative or their staff here or themselves because safety is critical to the bottom line.
Good, looking at this, and I know we can't talk about, you know, individual people, but what the heck happened at the Board of Ed in 7109 to 7110? We had forty-five workers' comp claims for $443,000. I mean, was there a... I mean, are we allowed to find out what went wrong? I mean, I am happy to see that we're down to fourteen claims this year.
You can see the nature of the claims.
Right. Do we know what the nature of that claim? I mean, did we have, Fran, did you forget to plow the parking lot over there? I mean, that's serious, that's serious money. And the one in Mirma was charged. I mean, forty-five claims, did our students, were they okay?
Well, some of it has to do, it's also a frequency of claims that were incurred, but in Board of Ed...
You know what's interesting, though, actually? I don't want to, because I get in trouble for this. So I don't want to pick on just the Board of Ed. The town side had thirty claims in that same year. Was there, like, a black hole that we went into or something? I mean, that's, could we come up with what happened that year?
Yes.
I mean, could you, could we, like, find out what the forty-five claims were on the Board of Ed side and then what the thirty were on the town side? And again, I want the people in town to know that the town side's only seven claims this year and the Board of Ed is fourteen. So whatever, whatever has happened since then, we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah.
But I'm just curious, what seventy-five claims were of workers' comp in the town? And you know what? That explains, and I think some of the council members that were here, when the, when the, one of our insurance people was here and they said, "Well, North Branford has a very bad reputation." And, you know, I can see why, but at least now it's, we're heading in the right direction. But I still would love to know what the, what the type of injury was on both sides, unless nobody else cares.
I care.
I care.
I mean, because that's, that was, we paid out, in that year, our insurance paid out $650,000 in workers' comp claims.
Richard, is there any type of exit strategy with Mirma? Now that it's...
Yes. It's going into runoff. The board is still intact. They are still subject to audit. We had a report at the annual meeting that Anthony referred to earlier, from their auditor, to watch for any anomalies like our auditors do. The state insurance department is still overseeing the runoff. And I think we can see, I think, a lot declining exposure to Mirma costs, but it's going to be a number of years, a few more years left until we can fully close the book on Mirma.
Wow.
Thank you. Item D, Financial Report, November 30, 2011.
Remarkable. However, I would like to remark on a couple of things. Half-two lines are, again, the ones I try to focus on on a monthly basis. Tax collections on a current basis were actually one-tenth percent ahead of last year, which is a good thing. And the second line, property taxes delinquent. You see, last year's time, we collected about $84,000. This year, about $174,000. So on a total revenue basis, we're a little bit ahead of last year. Down to the bottom of the page, we're a little bit behind last year expenditure. So it's a very, very good report. Happy to present Christmas present for this year.
Well, I'd take my hat off to the people in North Branford in this economy for paying their taxes.
Yeah. Yeah, things are going very well. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Approval of tax refunds? Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Finance Subcommittee Agenda Draft.
Generally, the finance committee meets on the second Wednesday of the month, but because we only had one council meeting this month, we haven't had a finance committee meeting yet. So that's why there's no date on here. It's just to be determined if it's, can everyone meet next Wednesday, which would be the 21st, just to get it in prior to our next council meeting, which is January 3rd.
Is, which property is 267 Branford Road?
It's Monroe, the blue building.
No, that's Danny Monroe.
It's Dan Monroe.
It's Dan Monroe's property.
Again, with, and his property is one of them that, you know, when you, when you look at it, I think the way that, the way that we left this, so, in the discussion with him, I would say that the council's going to take another look at this.
I think he went another way. Wasn't he saying he was going another way or something like that?
He's back.
Yeah, I think he was going to the back.
Okay.
He's still interested in connecting to someone. The Christmas concert that night in middle school.
Isn't there any, can't we just have it in January, the second meeting, the second week of the month? I mean, why rush it? There's all the holidays and everything's going on.
It's fine with me. I just didn't know if he wanted to. Because last year, we didn't have one in December and there was controversy. It's fine with me not to have it.
What was the controversy?
Because it was canceled because of the holidays. Close to the holidays.
Want to set a date anyway?
You want to, why don't, do you, well, you want to keep it at the second Wednesday in January?
Oh, okay, yeah, fine.
Well, the only thing is, the agenda might change some because we have a council meeting on. So do you want to not approve this and just wait for our next council meeting?
I want to move it table until the next, I moved it table until the next council meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so the meeting will still be out. Move the table, the Finance Subcommittee meeting by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
And the date would be the 11th, proposed date?
11.
Item G, Cedar Lake Road Area Water Project. De Grant.
Mr. Mayor, we've been, and council members, we've been waiting for this agreement to come through. And we've been keeping track of progress slowly with the Department of Environmental Protection. So you now have a document in front of you that includes a total budget of $119,747.07. This has been reviewed by the Office of the Town Attorney. The town engineer is recommending that we execute the document, the professional services agreement and contract, and that we can allow work to proceed on the installation of water service for the Cedar Lake Road area.
I'm going to make a motion. Is it a resolution or a motion?
Motion. It's captured, motion. I'll second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Thirteen, Citizen Statements and Petitions.
John Lindofi, Village Street, Northford. I'm here to say, congratulate all you councilmen for being back here again. You did a great job in the election, both Democrat and Republican. And I publicly stated that I believe you're probably the finest executive council we've ever had. So with that, I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year to your families. Mary Coruso, Jeffrey Brannigan, John Yozandi, and all the people living in North Branford. Thank you very much.
Thank you, same to you.
David Alumbo, I'd like to wish all you guys a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thrilled to, that you pulled me back up and have served the community and our way to give back. And I also agree with John Lindofi. I think you guys have done a fantastic job. I think the transparency on all sides is nothing but great for our community. And I'm honored to be here for another term and give back to our community and look forward to everybody having a happy New Year. I appreciate all your efforts. I'm blessed and I'm supported. Appreciate it.
You too, Dave. Thank you.
Make a motion.
I'll turn.
We gotta go with the session. We gotta go.
We got to turn first.
No.
No.[1750.94]